I believe that we are ready to begin again, and I am the meeting manager for this part of the work session. And before we begin, I believe that there are more handouts coming, but just so that people, so that we sort of frame this, and I will turn it over to Dr. Braybrand for a second as well. The decision point on Thursday will be authorizing the expenditure of up to $267,000. This is up to, and it may turn out not being that, but that we were told that there will be some advanced ordering of equipment, athletic whatever, and so we need to be able to put in, in, in process a way to be able to do those advanced orders. So, the purpose of the information that we're going to get is the implementation plan, which Dr. Braybrand said he would come back with. There's a great deal of detailed information because we know that school board members have been very interested in that. But again, the decision point is the authorization of, of a certain amount of money up to so that some of the advanced purchasing and ordering can go forward. So, Dr. Braybrand, if you want to start?
Thank you Chairman Strauss. Good afternoon, everybody. Hope you enjoyed lunch. And listen, I just wanted to frame a little bit before we get started. I want to thank everybody for coming. I know this has been a topic that has been a major topic in the community for, for well over two years, two and a half years now. I do want to help frame just our discussion here up front. When I came in July, this was a, a topic that was very passionately being discussed and debated by the school board. I feel in the last six months, you authorized me to begin the renaming process, which we did. We had two very, very effective Saturdays where we followed the regulation for the renaming process, and then I brought you a list of names, and then the board voted to name the school Justice High School. Now, before this calendar year ends, we have gone through all of that process, and I'm bringing you an implementation plan for Justice High School. What are the highlights? The implementation plan I'm bringing you is to move forward with implementing Justice High School for the next school year. I realize, and you realize that you gave me the ability to look at next year or the year after. I believe it's time to bring all of this to a close and move forward together as a community and a school system. You also needed to know the specifics. Earlier, because the next piece here in the implementation process is, is a huge topic, it's the question of money, the money for the implementation. Earlier, back in the times when the board was discussing this, we had estimates, and to be honest, they were very broad estimates based on our previous experiences. And this is not similar to our previous experience. This is a school that we are renaming, and there are pieces in the implementation plan where we do not have to get everything completely brand-new. And so, I am proud to report while estimates were higher, I guess eight, nine-hundred thousand, I brought you today, working very hard with staff, an estimated cost of the implementation plan that is $428,000, almost half of the original estimates. The truth is, even as we go out to bid, these numbers may go down a little bit too, and I want you to know that. We are going to ask as a decision point for you all to let us have up to 267,000 to be expended from the flexibility reserve this year, and an additional amount later for the '19 flexibility reserve. And these amounts can be reduced and, and would be reduced by future donations received. There are others, some other related considerations that won't come up as much maybe today in the level of detail around the preservation of school history, the disposition of Jeb Stuart Mimo Rabilia, planning for a rededication ceremony to kick off the new Justice High School for the 2018-'19 school year, and plans to do awareness and recognition of Justice Thurgood Marshall, Barbara Rose Johns, and Colonel Louis Menendez, which came up in part of your discussions and debate, your passionate debate around this issue. But I do believe we've brought you today a thoughtful implementation plan that's fiscally responsible and that has the level of detail to give you the transparency and accountability that I know you expect from me and from our administration. And I'm going to let Deputy Superintendent Dr. Lockhart start us off. He's been pulling everybody together over the last couple of months. I'm proud of the work he's done and staff have done, and let him give you a few highlights, and then we'll be glad to take any questions. We'd love to be able to move forward from here, get the access for the reserve fund so that we can begin making the purchases and kick off Justice High School for the next school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, Chairman Strauss. Good afternoon, everybody. Before we get started, I just want to introduce a few folks here with us today. These folks were all part of the conversations we've been having over the last couple of months as we've done a very deep dive and a lot of work at, at Jeb Stuart High School as we prepare for the implementation of Justice High School. That includes Principal Penny Gross, the DSA Brian Garvey, Bill Curran, as you know, Jeff Plattenberg, and several of our leadership, leadership team members have all been a part of that. Today, what we hope to do is to be able to provide you with some highlights as well as dive into any of the questions around the specifics that you may have as it relates to the implementation plan. As Dr. Braybrand said, at least to my knowledge, this is a first in, in terms of work that the system has done with renaming a school. And so, so we look for your, your feedback, your suggestions and your questions to help us through this process. First, what I'd like to do is just briefly highlight the, the one-page implementation plan timeline that, that was posted. Not only, obviously, did we look at the costs associated with the name change, but we really tried to lay out and think about a timeline of process over the next 12 to 18 months. And this really captures the broader, the broader components of all that's, that's involved. There's clearly going to be lots of work embedded under each of these, and some of that has yet to be, yet to begin. But we wanted to have a place where we could sort of have a template, if you will, about, okay, let's think, sort of start to finish, what are some of those key components or key milestones where, where things need to happen as it relates to the Justice High School name implementation? And so, while I'm not going to read through all of those with you, I wanted to reference that we did spend a lot of time in, in, in the group work where we thought about, we also took feedback and suggestions from, from other staff in our system, from community, particularly from Principal Gross's staff and school community as well. From there, then, what I'd like to do, and we can stop and ask and answer questions anytime you like, but I just want to kind of highlight some of the big things that we'd like to try to do today. From there, if we could go back to the PowerPoint, I do, I would like to then say, okay, this is our recommended timeline and plan of events that need to happen, so how do we go about making that happen as it relates to the costs, and what are the costs involved? And as Dr. Braybrand said, we did a lot of work with, you know, initial estimates, what did we look at? Well, we looked at, the only thing we really had to look at, because we haven't done a name change before, is when did we open a new high school, and what were some of those associated costs? Throughout the months, we've refined that down to, okay, we're not opening a, a brand-new facility, so what is it that has the, the name associated with it that we would need to make sure we provide to students and to the school as we make this transition into next year? I'm looking at Dr. Braybrand, were you about right to say something? I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. So, that, that led us to the, to work on the, I tried to get everything on one sheet, even though it's a big sheet, the cost analysis. So, if we could go ahead and move to the cost analysis. This is, I would, I would like to try to walk through and explain some of the cost analysis to you before we really dive into it. We also brought with us today all of our background information, which we've made copies for you, should you want to see that, of every single activity and every single analysis of why we've included what we've included on here, including participation numbers and, and the like. So, as it relates to the cost analysis, you can see the, obviously, the categories are pretty self-explanatory. We wanted to make sure we had a commitment date, that we could have a date by which we would need to make sure if there's something we need for the school, that we've recognized that and indicated it so that we can be out in front of it. That's also reflected in that one pager we just looked at timeline-wise. We included the, the program, so you can see each of those individual programs there, the original estimate, and then we have two columns I want to make sure I explain, and explain the, the colors associated with them. Okay, so the first revised estimate mascot change column, that is, if the school is currently in a process right now, Principal Gross is leading them through the process of thinking about, we have a new name for our school, do we want to have a new, a new mascot name? So, they're currently working through a process with their student body, and she's been communicating that with her school community. That should be completed sometime in January, we believe. And if they were to choose a, a new mascot name, then that first column recognizes the costs associated with Justice High School, whatever they might be, right? Whatever they, whatever they decide. Embedded in this column, we have also gone through category by category, program by program, garment by garment, any, any uniform that has any nonlogo, still in good shape components to it. Let me give you a, for example, for example, if the baseball team has plain baseball pants, we looked at those in terms of condition, would they still be appropriate for use? They don't have a logo or a mascot on them, we felt that we were able to keep those and not add those to a cost, we did that. And again, we have all of the detail of, of all of those different programs and what we thought we would be able to keep, that's non-logoed, that was neutral enough, that we felt it would be appropriate. So, that is already embedded in that, in that first column. That same idea is embedded in the second revised estimate column for no mascot change. So, if the school votes and they decide to keep Raiders as the mascot, we have many garment, athletic garment pieces that just say Raiders on them. We went through program by program and found all, all of those components and, and deducted out for this column if the school chose Raiders, and there's a perfectly good baseball jersey that was recently ordered that just says Raiders, we didn't include that cost then in this second column. We also kept anything neutral that we could still use in this column as well. So, those are the two columns and, and what's involved in those. The colors there indicate the sort of yellowish color. Anything highlighted in that means that would, we would need to order before this fiscal year is over. And then you can see at the very bottom, in the bottom left, where we have a, a yellow bar and a total column down there, that's reflected from that first request of up to a certain amount we'd have to request. Anything not highlighted in yellow would be requested the following school year, or not necessary until the following school year. A couple of notes about uniforms that I want to make sure everybody hears. The first one is, in a normal uniform replacement cycle, the, the typical purchase is for varsity replacements only. And what happens in high schools is varsity gets the new uniforms, and the old ones get handed down to, to JV or freshmen, okay? So, in a typical replacement cycle, we're just replacing varsity uniforms. However, in, in this case, what we've had to do is cost through, but we're not just replacing or requesting to replace varsity uniforms, because we can't just hand down old uniforms that have the old school name on them. So, that's one of the differences in the, in the pricing that we have to consider as we, as we did this exercise.
I, I tell folks, there's different moments, you know, you listen, you listen, and then what are nuggets? That's just a nugget to keep in mind. The cycles normally through athletics are for varsity replacement, and when we replace the varsity, the tradition here is we take those uniforms and send them on down. You can't do that here when you're involved in a renaming, so just a nugget.
Another, another nugget, if you will, and Scott already mentioned this, is, is that we do anticipate additional savings when we actually put these items out for bid. Right now, we're just, we're, we're just going with our best estimate, and that includes a lot of people doing a lot of work trying to contact vendors and say, what kind of pricing do you currently have? And you'll hear that both with the, you know, with the athletics and performing arts as well as the capital component. But we do, we do believe we will recognize additional savings through the competitive bid process. And so, you know, we, we hope to be able to come in lower than, than what we've, what we've put. This is an up-to amount that we've, that we've put here. Our anticipation is that would be lower than that. So, having said that, what I'd like to do is have a little bit of conversation, I think I want to, I want to pause here because I'm sure there are questions around the costs. There are two other things I'd like to accomplish today after the costing piece. One is, just to give you a sense of, of the additional systemic impacts of a name change, there are, one of the attachments that was included was a pretty exhaustive list of all of the system changes for Justice High School. That was included in the attachments. I want to make sure if we have any questions around that. That's, that's a matter of scheduling lots of folks to do a lot of work to make those changes happen, and then certainly just to touch on the, the importance of the communication piece. Yes, and we can, if you'd like, go ahead and hand out the, Dr. Braybrand?
I think if you have it, just because it's not just these numbers, we have numbers behind these numbers. That's how much transparency there is, that's how much accountability there is, and I think it may be helpful for some board members, if you're ready for questions, Dr. Lockhart. I just wanted to maybe speak to this just for a minute, could be helpful for the board.
Sure. I, you know, I think at this point, Mr. Curran, Mr. Garvey, Ms. Gross, if you'd also like to chime in here, but basically, these are copies of our working notes, if you will, from when we did that deep dive into all of the programs and, and uniform pieces that, that you see there in terms of the athletics. We provided a little, a little bit of refresher information around the, the uniform cycle that we presented in October, October at a work session. You know, the, the uniform replacement, oh, I'm sorry, the uniform replacement cycle, we can talk a little bit about, about that. That really depends on, it's great to have a cycle, but it depends on several things happening to realize it, and it doesn't always get realized. I looked to the folks from the school, and we, we can talk about that a little bit too. We did share with you earlier this year, the, the school's student fund budget, which supports uniform purchase, and so we can go through any and all of this if you'd like. In fact, what I think maybe we could do is either, Mr. Curran, if you wouldn't mind, on the third page of this, this packet, in terms of the estimated annual operating budget, and I apologize, again, these are kind of our notes that we worked on putting together for you. It's the third page in. If you wouldn't mind, just briefly explaining, Mr. Curran, what we've been operating on as far as Jeb Stuart High School has, has gone over the last several years.
When we were first given the task, we took a look at, first of all, good afternoon, everyone. Always like to start off with that, so, good afternoon. Everyone's doing well. The, when we first were tasked with this, part of it was to look at what is currently in operation at Jeb Stuart High School. It varies by school across our county significantly. Understanding what the, the first step in that too, is that allocated funds go to nothing when it comes to uniforms or anything like that. There are no allocated funds provided to schools, so they're entirely on their own when it comes to their athletic programs with regards to operating costs and, and uniforms, things such as that. So, we took a look at some averages, we looked at their five-year averages, so what you see on that sheet is a, is a five-year average of their gate receipts. You see an average of their booster club donation over five years that, that varies at times and has in those five years, sometimes a little bit significantly, but ultimately, what we came up with was the average. And then, based on the uniform replacement cycles we had from the school and the things we had, what was their goal as far as the amount of money to set aside for uniform? Now, this is an important point, or in Dr. Braybrand's words, nugget. That $27,600 is the goal point that they reach for within their uniform replacement cycle. Their uniform replacement cycle itself is what, again, they shoot for to meet, but that's completely dependent on funding being available to do that from the multiple sources that it comes from, which are gate receipts, booster donations, and individual fundraising that go to, to fund this. And that is entirely dependent on those things. So, some years, they might meet that goal and be able to do it, other years, they may not, nor have they been able to reach that goal and do that. So, that's an important piece to remember as you look at all of this. These are some of their goal points that they have. Those first two points are what we do know as average. There's also just the regular operating cost that comes into play that, that they absorb. Everything from up until they got their two turf fields irrigation system maintenance, which had the annual open and shut down and things like that that take place, all of our schools just shut down their irrigation because it freezes. Fortunately for Stuart now, they have all turf fields, so they don't have to start up or shut down irrigation systems, but they had, that is part of what a general operating budget. They do pay for their transportation costs when it comes to outside tournaments, tournaments that aren't regular season tournaments, as well as postseason. We do support some of that centrally, but it's at a percentage, it's not at the 100% rate. And at times, within the current district slash conference they compete in, region they compete in, that is taking them far away, and, and that's not a cheap cost. Again, we're able to support that or supplement it centrally, but it's not a dollar-for-dollar piece. Other facility maintenance that goes into their facility, whether it's just cleanup, beautification, things like that, or actual maintenance on some of their outbuildings and the things, those are not accounted for in our capital costs. Those are costs that they handle each and every year. Entry fees into individual tournaments that their teams may go to, individual tournaments they run, the cost of running those tournaments, personnel is related to running their games. Every school is kind of dependent on how they manage their ticket manager, or their ticket takers and things like that. Stuart's one that where they do a lot of funding towards their ticket takers, and they do it through our, our appropriate process, but that costs them money out of that overall operating fund. And then there's just the annual, they need to replace helmets every year, both in lacrosse and, and in football. They need to replace catcher's gear in baseball and softball, they need to do those replacements of some of the larger items that go to equipment. So, that's what accounts for the overall operating budget that they need to work with within each year, and it's kind of a brief synopsis of that page.
I also certainly thank you, Bill. I didn't want to forget about, in addition to athletics, the performing arts components as well as the capital, and Mr. Plattenberg has joined us for, for that component as well. The, the rest of the, the packet really goes, like I said, goes through that specific uniform description, and that kind of helped our decision-making about, does it have an existing logo, does it not? Is it neutral, is it not? Is there varsity, JV, and, and freshman component to that? Participants, Stuart has seen an increase in their overall student population as well as an increase in participation in many of their programs as well. So, a lot of those things had to be taken into consideration as we presented to you. So, what I'd like to do, I'm sure there are some questions here at this point, what I'd like to do is kind of hit the pause button, Chairman Strauss?
Yes, okay. Thank you. All right, and everybody has the, the detailed list. I have Ms. Evans, then Ms. Palchak, Karen Corbett Sanders, Keith Kamara. Okay, Ms. Evans.
So, thank you. I very much appreciate the refinement that, that you've done for the numbers, and I think we're getting, we're getting closer, and that's great. Of course, we're just seeing this breakdown, you know, I appreciate you doing the breakdown for us on a sport-by-sport basis, because, as you know, one of my concerns were to get an accurate accounting on a sport-by-sport basis with the uniforms. So, this will be very helpful in going through and seeing, seeing where exactly we are, and I appreciate your outlining the fact that the varsity tends to, to pass things on to the JV and the freshman teams as well. Just to get clarity, and I, I had a brief conversation with Principal Gross while we were getting ready for this session. As far as the source of the funding, Mr. Curran, you said no allocated funds go to any of our sports teams, to any of the uniforms, any of the equipment, correct?
That's correct. There's a caveat to that with the, with the reconditioning, which doesn't go necessarily to buy new equipment, but I do want to make sure I make the point that reconditioning of football helmets and lacrosse helmets and shoulder pads of safety equipment, we send that out to a vendor, and there's a grant that goes back to the school to help cover. It covers about 70% of the cost of reconditioning, so our safety equipment isn't just out there. I'm not sure it really fits into that question, but I want to make sure I do say, we do provide some funding on the reconditioning of equipment to make sure it's safe.
So, basically, it's, it's primarily gate receipts, correct? That, that funds uniforms. So, as, as we've gotten deeper and deeper into this, I'm learning more about all of this, and one of the things that I'm increasingly looking at here is the issue of equity, and the fact that this is a school that would have more difficulty in funding these things anyway. And so, I'm, I'm having to think about this kind of in a different way, because this board may want to use this as an opportunity for this school. We're renaming the school, but this might be an opportunity for us to do an equity piece here. It's not really necessarily a name change piece, but it's about equity and bringing the, bringing Stuart slash Justice High School up to where other high schools are because of where they're located and the fact that they have a easier time either fundraising or more, more gate receipts. So, that's something that I think this board is going to have to consider when we move forward with this. I think the, the idea of having some front-end money, money while we are waiting for the fundraising to come through is, is a good idea, because I also agree that it would be best if we could have this change done by the next school year. I don't think it would help anybody to drag it out for another year. You know, we did give you the, the leeway to do that if, if you needed the time, but if we can do it by the next school year, I think that that, that makes perfect sense. So, I will be looking at this inventory more closely to see where we are on that, because I, and I do appreciate the, the, the explanation. So, the football uniforms that we, that the school bought two years ago cost about $14,000, according to something that Dr. Lockhart just, just got to us. So, the reason that it's significantly more than that is because it's, it's the three different teams, correct?
Right. The $14,000 quote was just for varsity only.
Right.
The, and again, this, this estimate here has not been bid.
Right. So, it could be different, yeah.
So, I would imagine it would be a lot less, but it is for three programs with increased participation in the program over the 2016 purchase for varsity uniforms.
Okay. Although, I'm, I'm still saying, you know, let's count it up to $15,000 and multiplying by three, that's still $45,000, so that's another $20,000 for other pieces in the, in the football program, so, and I assume that that's in this document that we just received, the different, the difference between the--
What you have is, is the information we were able to garner from a couple of multiple vendors. I do expect to see the savings on that side.
Okay.
Particularly probably the largest, because it's, one of the largest numbers is going to be with football.
Okay.
We went through and we've, I think I've spent more time with these numbers than I have with my dog, so, you know, and, and I like my dog a lot.
Yeah.
So, you know, the reality is, I, that's a number I do have an expectation we're going to see the biggest reduction in, but that is the number that-- in, but that is the number that our vendor, or a couple of the vendors, including what is considered the biggest vendor in the country, provided us in the, in the bulk order, with the numbers that you see reflected in the sheet that you have as far as participation goes. And we did like-to-like comparisons, so we took pictures of what exists and we gave that to the vendor and said, give us the closest match you could. So we weren't going way up, we weren't going way down, we were sticking with that. And then on the sub-varsity levels, and particularly with football, but on the sub-varsity levels, what's called stock order, which is obviously reduced quality, reduced flourish to it. It's a cheaper item. It's an off-the-shelf, off-the-item that would be printed. And ultimately, that's what they came back with. I do think, once we get in the competitive bid, or I'm, I'm extremely confident, once we get in the competitive bid, we'll see the football number drop.
This will come down?
Pretty, pretty significantly.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good to know. And...
There, there are, and, and I'm sorry, just a, a point that Ms. Gross and Mr. Garby just made is, there, there are practice jerseys worked into that, because the practice jerseys carry logo. So there is some practice material that's in there. Again, a per-item cost not significant, but it, it wasn't ordered in that order that we're reflecting on in 2016.
So previously, you gave us a replacement cycle, and there are some things that, that were listed as being annual replacement, and yet we're still costing them out as name change. And so I'm, I'm wondering whether that's really a name change, if every year we are redoing those. And I think that was, I mean, would we nor, wouldn't we normally, wouldn't we normally have that cost this coming year?
We would normally have a portion, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, there may be a portion of that cost, but, so a freshman, let's say he was coming in to, to golf, is going to get the shirt, and that shirt will last them. And so they'll either order it themselves, or the school will keep a stock that they reissue. So there's, there's a portion of that that is still going to continue while it's an annual replacement. Some of that will still continue into a regular piece, into a regular order to maintain stock as a school-issued item that comes back. Part of, and again, I'll defer if I, if I misspeak on this, but part of what you're going to see is some of those students can't afford to go out and buy that shirt to keep for their own stock. So the, the school makes sure they have on stock to issue it for those teams.
Okay. Well, and then some of these things were due for replacement this coming year anyway, correct?
Again, I, I'd stipulate that with regards to the uniforms themselves, the goal was due for replacement. Let's go back to the football uniforms, the information we know. So they hadn't been replaced. When they replaced in 2016, they hadn't been replaced prior to that. It was 2000, not 2000, 2011 or 12, I think. So well past what the replacement cycle would have been.
Okay.
So that replacement cycle is the goal.
Okay.
One of Brian, one of Mr. Garby's jobs is to say, this is what we need to look towards to keep it replaced and keep it updated.
Okay.
That's balanced against the restraint of the budget.
I see. Okay.
And so sometimes they are not going to match up real, real well. So what you have there on the cycle is what we would have hoped to have done.
So if, if the uniforms were replaced according to the replacement cycle, all of these would have been replaced within three years, correct? Isn't that what?
Right. That would be the goal. It really depends on, if you look at our athletic ticket gates over the past five years, they fluctuate. If you get a rained-out homecoming, it's not going to be a great year for you. It also depends on what the boosters are able to raise. And there are some years, again, over the past five years, where the donation was significantly less. So while the goal is three years, and I would bet many high schools in Fairfax County are able to adhere to that, we are not able to guarantee uniform replacement cycles that follow every three years exact.
Okay. But, but my point was that if we were following the replacement cycle, that all of these should be replaced in the next three years, correct? That, that's, that's what we, we would want, want to see. That's our objective.
You're saying all varsity would be replaced in the next three years?
I'm just looking at the replacement cycle that Mr. Kern gave us before, and it's showing that the replacement cycle for these uniforms are, all of them would be in the next three years if we did it according to your replacement.
But again, we wouldn't replace JV and freshmen. They would get hand-me-down uniforms.
All right. And I guess we just need to think about what is real, real name change cost versus what we would, our, our, our goal anyway for, for replacing uniforms, which again, brings up the equity issue. If Stewart High School can't replace anywhere close to the replacement cycle that other high schools in Fairfax County can, that puts a different face on all of this. And I think we need to address the equity issue as we go through this transition. And then I just had a few other things before I, I kind of studied that. And Mr. Plattenberg, on, you and I also had a conversation about the, the, the painting of the turf fields and that, your, your best estimate so far, you haven't bid it out, but you, you got an estimate that's, that's higher than the original one we got. And that was from going to one vendor to get a ballpark figure. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, it's a good point. What we did was, well, you know, you think about the evolution of this and all the conversations we've had. We went ahead and initially, we were promoting, and in fact, staff's recommendation was to go ahead and replace the turf pieces with whatever may come about. When the determination was that the desire was to go ahead and paint, we provided an alternative to paint it. We went ahead and costed that out internally. And then as that continued to evolve and all of the different meetings we had and the details and getting further into it, we went out to vendors that actually, this is what they do, and got price estimates. We found that the paint that we were doing our estimating on, for example, one of the differences in the cost, the paint that we had done our estimating on was not the type of paint that's required for artificial turf fields. There are many problems with not utilizing paint that's appropriate for an artificial turf field, considering the drainage and all these other aspects, and that's the reason why the pricing is higher. Now, keep in mind, the life cycle on paint and so forth is, is not as durable. We're still having some experience with spot painting that we've done where there's been damage that's been done by some, some, vandalism. That's vandalism, that's what it was, one of our high schools. So, you know, again, this is new foray to us, but the quote and the price is given by a vendor who is qualified to maintain the warranties on the product and also has experience doing it, and that's the increase in the cost.
Okay. Then a, a couple of other questions before I let it go on to other folks. Some of these items that I apparently have just, have been marked with the Stewart name. That's what I'm gathering. The volleyballs with Stewart on it, that's, it's, it's just got, is it just marked? Is that how it?
I mean, generally, yes. Like the volleyballs, it's, it's written in permanent ink, because those volleyballs travel with them. With regards to football or, or the thicker leather items, it's burned, it's usually etched in and, or burned in.
Okay.
It's a logo mark that they put in it, so you don't lose the asset.
Okay. All right. And I, I guess what I'm leading up to is whether any of these items that we are replacing, if there is any market for selling them, defraying the cost, auctioning some of these things off, not necessarily, I don't know if the volleyballs would have any market, but some of these items that, that we're going to replace, would there be some effort to defray costs through that?
I think our objective is that anything that carries it would be open to the, the plan on the backend with regards to the sale.
Okay. All right. And...
Ms. Evans, if I might.
Sure.
The last part of the business case says, these are things that we will continue to look at, including plan for the disposition of the memorabilia, the preservation of the school history.
I see. Okay.
And rededication and the naming. So we don't have that level of detail for you today.
All right.
And, and I do hope, I think board members all have the packet. Between this chart and this supporting documentation, I believe we have been as transparent as possible to show what the costs are and let you and anybody else in the public who wants to understand the finances behind this about what's involved. And I, I do appreciate staff and their time to make this happen.
So the, the other, the last thing that at least I'm not seeing in the materials is a robust fundraising plan. You know, I know we've put the, the button on the website, but I know there are members in the community who are anxious and energetic about going out and fundraising. They're looking for direction. They would like to have, be able to form a committee that's connected to FCPS. And so I do think that's a piece that, that we need to have here. Is that something that you're working on, Dr. Braybrand?
I mean, with all honesty and transparency, I don't believe I was directed to do a fundraising plan. You asked me to do an implementation plan. If the board decides that we need to do a fundraising plan, I think we'll need to take a, to look at what else is involved. We did work to build a website to get it up and running after the vote, and I think it went up at midnight after the vote, but we haven't done anything beyond that.
And my advocacy would be that we do have a fundraising plan, that, one of the things the board said was that, that we anticipate that a substantial portion of this would come from donations, and I believe the board still considers that ideal. So if, if that's still the board's belief on this, then the fundraising does need to have, there needs to be a, a plan for that. Some members of the community have said they'd like to have a, a name for their group and, you know, some letterhead, so they can actually go out and, and with, with some energy and enthusiasm, go out there and, and really beat the bushes for money. So at least my advocacy for one next step would be to, to create such a plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Palchak.
Thank you. And we appreciate this information. It's taken a little while to look at it while we go through it, and I think it answered some of my questions. And I appreciate all of you being here. Number one, you've mentioned the difference between the goal replacement and the, and the actual replacement. Do you have a sense of what that difference is in yours?
Yeah. So one of the things that's difficult in my position is people always ask for a budget. You know, I present a budget to the booster club, and it's difficult. And as, I don't know from year to year how much money I'm going to have, right? So I have an average of a ticket gate that we get. I get an average of a booster club donation, but as an example, last year I received about $11,000 from my booster club at this time of the year, and then I didn't receive any more money until this past September. So even going over the summer and planning for the year ahead, I still didn't know how much money I would have coming in. So that being said, to answer your question, typically, in, I would say in the last five years or last four years, probably spent about $15,000 on uniforms a year, average.
And so I'm trying to look at the numbers here. So if the goal is four teams per year, correct? Four sports, it looks like, is the goal every year. And so...
Correct, yeah. Yeah.
And so that might only, it looks like just girls lacrosse, and I understand that includes, are there an alphabetical order? And I understand that also includes JV, so we don't have the breakdown. But I assume, let's say, if the change for the girls lacrosse uniform is $18,000 for JV and varsity, can we assume it's about half of that for varsity? Would be around $9,000? Would... So what I'm looking at is it has the rotation estimate, correct? And just to clarify, this year, where it says current replacement rotation estimate, that is the goal? So girls tennis, boys tennis, girls lacrosse, and girls soccer for this year is the hope, or is that what's actually happening?
It's, I'll let Brian answer as far as what's actually happening, but to your, to your question, so we kind of go in order, and it helps me stay, make sure I answer, we can answer everything. The piece as far as the, the breakdown being half JV, half varsity, no, because again, when we priced out the prices that we have now, where we have to replace a sub-varsity level, we did that at a, at a lower rate. We did it with lesser quality product. Because again, three, four, or five years from now, when we have to replace the varsity uniform that was new, that's going to be hand-me-down, and so we don't need it to last as long. So, so what you see in the estimates reflects a cheaper JV product or sub-varsity product than what we're going, what the intent is to spend on the varsity. As far as the rotation goes, and maybe, maybe this will help kind of wrap your heads around it, one of the things is that, that our DSA's, our task was, with doing is making sure that they're keeping a good prioritized list. Because i-if, if Mr. Garby doesn't have a rotation and it's not organized, and someone comes up and gets a new uniform, there are a lot of implications to that. One is perception of what he's doing with his program. Two are real, real Title IX issues and things like that. Are we looking at this in an equitable manner between each team within the full cycle? So that cycle reflects a priority list for him of what he has to do in the next year as best he can and move forward. And that's, that's kind of what it does show. As far as the expectation, what he was going to do this year, I'll, I'll defer that to, to Mr. Garby. That's, that's going to be his expertise. Does that answer the first two questions?
No, I, I think it does. And, and it's starting to understand, so we're buying different quality. I get that, because that was a follow-up. But then I want the answer to, I guess, because we're able to get a five-year average of what came in, but maybe we could get what was replaced in the last five years, right? I, I would find that helpful, because we're looking at goals and we're know we're not meeting those goals. So it's really hard for me personally to be able to estimate and see what's, would, if this weren't to change at all, what would be happening in the next five years, based on what happened in the last five years, right? And right now, I feel like we've gotten a lot more of those pieces, and I really appreciate that, but we're still missing some very basic pieces of, this is what we actually replaced in the last five years, right?
Yeah, that was provided. I, I have some of that information right here in front of me, but it's not included in this packet. But just to speak to the girls lacrosse, also those numbers, you asked if you could just cut it in half, and half of that would be worth. It, it's not. If you looked up at the top, you know, it would also be replacing a set of warm-ups that our varsity team has, that has logo, school name, et cetera, that would be included. Some of our teams have warm-ups, some of our teams do not. Some of it's based on the sport itself. Take wrestling, for example. They wear singlets. They can't walk around all day in just a little singlet. So they, you know, typically have warm-ups as part of their uniform. So, you know, there are the differences with that.
Okay. I, I guess what's a little bit challenging is going between the two. Sometimes they're lining up, sometimes they're not. So for that line item, right in this sheet breakdown, I see 20 warm-ups. I don't see bags. And then the cost. So I wasn't sure if the cost was just for the uniform, if it was for the equipment and the uniform. And then up on where you just spoke to, on the budget breakdown, it says uniforms, warm-ups, and bags. So it's just taking a little bit. We're just receiving this information of going back and forth and trying to understand what's included and what. And so some of my specific questions are, are to that, are to, I guess I see that for this year, what I'm trying to understand is for this year, the estimate was to try to replace girls tennis, boys tennis, girls lacrosse, and girls soccer, correct? But I can assume that based on the past five years' activity, that would not have happened out of your budget. Do you know what you would have been able to replace this year? Can you answer that?
Do you mean specifically what sports? Or do you mean how much?
Maybe both.
Well, for example, in my budget for this year, I had $10,000 in there for uniform replacement, because I knew we were going through a name change. However, I knew sometimes that there's things you have to replace, like our track uniforms, just to make sure we have enough for kids to participate. So that's why...
And if you look on the spreadsheet, you'll notice that the $10,000 that we had budgeted is defrayed from the total spreadsheet cost.
Right. No, I see. And then I guess, so that is what you estimated, even though normally, is my question A, you've had increased participation. Have we had increased ticket sales this year? Or do you estimate?
Yes.
We do. So, and is that reflected in this budget? Because I actually see 10,000 as opposed to...
But we're talking, so this past school year was a good year at 47,000. The year before that was 41, before that 43, before that 42. So we're still kind of in the same range of staying in the 40s, and it's fluctuating by a few thousand dollars, which again, depends on, last year we had several big games. Actually, for the last couple of years, homecoming has been rained out. This fall was the first time since I've been at Stewart that homecoming was not a rain out.
Last year it was rained out, and you still got up to 47,000.
And that was due to girls soccer going all the way far in our district, which was unusual for our team. So that brought a very strong spring. It was not due to football.
Okay. No, I appreciate. And, and obviously, they're all estimates, right? But I just want to be able to make sure we have the context that we have increased participation. We are also seeing, I mean, 41 to 47 is quite a jump. It is closer to 50. So we are seeing an increase in ticket sales. And from the annual operating budget, it looks like if the estimate was 42,000 from ticket sales, 15,000 from the booster club. So out of that is where you, your, the goal is 27,600 a year on uniform cost? But you're saying we're only estimating 10,000 this year?
Some of the uniform replacement cost is going to come from team fundraising. So Brian is not paying for all of that out of this budget. So some of the teams fundraise, and that again, depends year to year.
Okay.
There's just one point of context. The, the ticket receipts. Stewart is among the two or three lowest in the county by far, by far from the top end. I don't mean by far across the county, but from the even average, they're, they're significantly lower than most. So just as a point of context to keep in mind with regards to those tickets. It sounds like a lot of money, and...
No, no, I understand.
But the reality is, it's in the grand scheme of things across our county. It's, it's...
And I have a question, referring to Ms. Evans' equity issue. Are there other districts where they average out ticket sales across their schools rather than having it be school-specific?
That's a great question, and I appreciate you. I really do appreciate you asking it, because frankly, across the country, how school districts budget and allocate funding for athletics varies significantly. It, and across our bordering school districts, it varies significantly. We sit down, I sit down with my counterparts from Arlington, Alexandria, Loudoun, Prince William County, a couple times a year, and we just, we have these discussions, and we talk about it. And we all do it, it's all done a little bit differently by our school board. So some, yes, absolutely, some don't touch it, some provide, you know, I know we spent some time looking at Houston and what they do, and it's all paid centrally. It's all covered centrally. So that's, you know, there's a lot of different, you know, from allocated to gate receipts being brought in, to all sorts of different models for that.
Okay. No, thank you, I appreciate that. And finally, you know, we're getting kind of nitpicky, and these are estimates. We do have, I'm sorry if you already spoke to it, the $25,000 for discretionary line item. Can you speak to that a little bit more on the budget?
We looked, so one of the things on the original PowerPoint slide you'd see is that while we did a complete and thorough comparison inventory to everything in the school, walked, I mean, we walked the school many, many times, this is not a one-to-one replacement. So everything that says Jeb Stewart on it is not getting replaced with a brand-new something else, justice, or whatever it might be. So it's not a wish list approach, it's more what's necessary. But there are things, as it relates to the day-to-day operation of the school, and I can let Principal Gross talk just a little bit about, as we think about, you know, we might need some discretionary funds for certain things. You know, one of the things that we were just talking about was, you know, ordering of varsity letters, right? I mean, I know it's not 25,000, but we can give you a whole big list of things. When a student letters in a sport, they get the letter, that's going to have to change. Principal Gross, just a, you know, overview of a few letters.
Which means that instead of just giving a letter to a student who's maybe a freshman, we now have to replace all the letters for all students at one time. I will say that through the last year, as we've dug into this, every day we find something new that we forgot. And I honestly am concerned the 25,000 is not going to be enough. Certainly, we will prioritize and make it work. We recently noticed all the music stands are stamped. So every music stand either needs to be repainted and restamped. Obviously, that's what we'll do, but the paint costs money. We talked about the athletic awards. All the awards that we give out, we obviously keep a stock. It isn't something that we're ordering just in a small quantity every year. So there are athletic awards that we give to all of our students who receive 3.5 and higher. A lot of that's sent out to a printer. So all of that would have to be replaced. Obviously, business cards. We ordered, we have achievement boards on the walls when you first walk in, where we recognize students and staff of the month. Those are logoed, so that was included. It really is just a laundry list of everything that you can think of. Honestly, the cafeteria tables, I'm not sure if those were in there. The enunciator, that got listed as a separate side item. But just throughout this process, we just continue to find things that are logoed, that we must have to be replaced. So it is kind of a laundry list of things relating to recognizing student achievement, to the athletic costs, such as the letters that we just talked about, the music stands, the music folios. Honestly, the money's going to go pretty quickly in that 25,000 dollars.
No, I appreciate that. And I guess my final question is a little bit to what I brought to our last work session in this arena, and trying to understand, well, I understand there are different quality of these uniforms, is do we have an estimate from our actual replacement cycle and cost of that, of this boost that we would essentially be giving to the school, the boosters and uniforms that maybe are going to be replaced way ahead of cycle? Do we have an estimate of the savings? So say next year, right, all of those ticket sales, everything that comes in will not have to go into the regular replacement cycle? So can we get an estimate also of that, that savings and that boost over the next five years?
And I'll let Principal Gross talk a little bit on this. I don't, when we do this, the reality is I don't think there's a savings associated to it. And let me explain why. Ultimately, all of this is going to need to be replaced on a very quick cycle in a very similar timeframe. And now that number has just gone up significantly from where they are trying to meet the four that they have. So there's a legacy issue here that also needs to be addressed. Now, we have some experience dealing with that as we have opened new schools. We've reached back into what we've done there and how we've set those cycles. So, you know, one of the things Mr. Garvey and I have already discussed is, okay, next year, you need to put money aside or buy uniforms. You can't not buy uniforms. Put them on the shelf, but buy uniforms, because now we want to start to build that staggered cycle. We want to start to build it. So that's more of a backend, I think, reality that we will look at, and we've kind of put some planning work into that, but frankly, most of it's been into this, into the front-end side. But as I see it, I really think there's not a savings, there's a cost that the school then is going to start building. Now, Principal Gross, I don't know if you have...
I mean, that's honestly what we've been talking about and worried about, is that, you know, we're going to have to replace uniforms that you guys buy brand-new for us before they're really ready for replacement. Or otherwise, we're going to get ourselves in a situation where we have a great financial burden coming all at once in a school that already struggles financially. We're going to have to set aside money from next year's budget. It's why I fought to not give that $10,000 that's listed as the last item. And ultimately, I lost that battle, and I get it. But my argument was just that we are going to have a burden put upon us to have to replace all of these things in a very close timeframe, where normally, we could say, football can go another year, field hockey can go another year, we could eke out some time, we're not going to be able to play by those rules anymore. We're going to have to replace early so that we can stagger these costs among many years, if that makes sense.
It does. I would still like to get a better sense of what that plan is, I think would be helpful from our end.
I would ask, and hope you understand, that the vast majority of our effort has been into making sure we do this as accurately and as best we can, and that certainly is a backend deliverable we can provide.
And I appreciate that. And I do truly appreciate that this does show, you know, quite a difference, and a much more, hopefully, accurate estimate rather than a slightly larger wish list. So thank you.
Okay, Ms. Corbett Sanders, then Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
And especially to the staff, Principal Gross and your whole staff, for the incredible work that you all have done in keeping a focus on student achievement during this process. And I don't think we can leave this table without showing that appreciation for you and your team, because you all have continued to succeed and improve student outcomes in your school over the past, under your leadership over the past 18 months. So I appreciate that. I'm glad that Mrs. Evans raised the issue of equity, because despite what was said earlier, this is actually the second school in Fairfax County to have its name changed.
I realized that as soon as I said it, and then looked at you and remembered your experience from Groveton. Thank you.
And I am a product of a school where a name was changed. And at that point, our policy was that we left it on the backs of the community to bear the burden of the name change. And as far as disposition of materials from that school, there was no attention paid to it. So, you know, 30 years later, we did, the community paid for a new sign. And this past fall, we actually had an interesting reunion where people brought jerseys from Fort Hunt. But there were no jerseys, or minimal jerseys, from Groveton, because there had not been careful attention to the disposition of the memorabilia. So I would suggest that you need to have some careful attention to the disposition. But I would also say that we learned a lot from that process. And the thing that I take away from that process is that we cannot leave the burden of changing, of the cost of changing the names on that community. And so I don't really have any intention of getting into the individual line items on this chart, because after all, operations falls within your bailiwick superintendent Braybrand. But what I would like to do is encourage all of my colleagues to get behind the use of the school board's discretionary fund for this purpose. And I will also encourage that we take the 10, increase the ask by $10,000, so that the $10,000 that you mentioned that you were fighting hard for the replacement cost in the future is given back to the booster organizations to do that. And the reason I say that, you all are a going concern. A going concern in business means that you actually create escrow accounts for replacement of equipment and materials. And so you need to have an escrow account, which allows you to build, you know, a cash account, so that when you need to replace individual uniforms or other things in here, then those are all built into it. And so I would urge my colleagues, and if, I don't know if I need to put forth a, an amendment that would increase the ask from the super, from the school board's discretionary fund for $10,000, I will be happy to do that. The second thing that I would urge is that when we're looking at some of the investments, and I don't know this, because this is not my community school, but I know that we looked at replacing a scoreboard in another area of the county and replaced it. And that scoreboard that was replaced provides a vehicle for fundraising for the boosters. And I don't know if, what the status of your scoreboard is. Are you able to sell digital ads?
No, we're not. We do have some ads on it. We're currently in a contract with a company that sells ads, and we get a percentage of the profit, like some other schools do. But we don't have the video portion of it.
You don't have the video portion? Okay, so at some point, we might be looking at something like that. So you're more along the lines of how Mount Vernon has done it and elsewhere?
Yeah, I would assume so. I'm not specific to Mount Vernon, but with some signage, yes. But again, it's been difficult in our community to sell those signs. I think when we entered into contract with that company, they realized that pretty quickly too, and we weren't able to get some of the stuff that some of the other schools got with their boards because of that.
Okay. Well, at a minimum, I will be asking my colleagues to increase the ask from our school board discretionary fund for the $10,000, because I just think that's what equity is all about. And therefore, the gate receipts can go back to the original plan for them. As far as fundraising, I think it would be helpful for, I don't, I'm not sure it's really the role of the superintendent to put together the fundraising plan, but maybe there's a role for the community to work with staff to create a fundraising plan, and that's probably best done with the school, but I don't know. I don't know, I mean, because, okay. Okay.
Okay, I would recommend this, up to Dr. Braybrand, to if, because this is an internal ask to allocate funds up to a certain amount. If you all feel that that is appropriate, certainly we can amend it, but I believe in talking with Ms. Michael, from the staff perspective, you all need to do a ballpark. I think what we're hearing is concern about, you know, how much are we, by the end of the day, how much we're going to need. So it is an up to figure. So again, I think Dr. Braybrand...
Well, I mean, to me, that's the beauty of the transparency we've provided you. We've told you what that 10,000 is. If you want to up it back 10, to protect it and give it back, we'd be glad to do that. And I am looking at, it's time to implement the name of Justice High School. I want to move forward. I mean, I want to take all the other questions. We have the detail. I stand behind the work of our staff on this detail. We have been fiscally responsible, and we have integrity in these numbers. And we're ready to go and start to create a new chapter in this community and in this school. And I appreciate all the questions. People need, the community needs, the system needs, and I even know this board needs to feel, the superintendent is transparent and has integrity in what he or she does. And I do, and the staff does. And I want you all to feel that in every single thing I present to you. Every single thing comes from a focus on truth and transparency.
Okay, at the end of the session, I would like to get at least a sense of the board, if people want to raise that dollar amount up to another $10,000, just to get a sense of where we are. It's not a binding vote. I would just like a sense so that we are somewhat organized as we go forward. Sure. For the $10,000, that wouldn't actually go directly back to the boosters, would it? No, it would come back to the school. Goes back to the school.
Yeah, we just wouldn't send forward a check from our local account.
Right. This would, to make sure that we are covering the true cost of what's going on. Okay, and Mr. Wilson, I will add you. Next, I have Karen Keys-Gamarra, then Ms. McGlaughlin, Ms. Schultz, and Mr. Wilson.
Okay. All right, we're going on. Thank you for coming. I haven't had an opportunity to meet you, Principal Gross, so I look forward to having an opportunity to visit, et cetera. I think, I want to just clarify, because I think a lot of the questions have been rather detailed, but part of what I believe is behind that is the realization that, at least it appears today to me, and based on my previous discussions regarding this high school, that there's been quite a bit of difficulty in terms of providing a lot of the things that are listed in a regular fashion. And is that not, I mean, in terms of what you would have expected, what would have been on your wish list, you have not been able to do that in the past?
I misunderstood, yep.
That is correct.
I would agree with you, that just finances are a struggle. Our boosters work very, very hard, a very small group of them, to raise our funds.
Certainly not, this is not a comment on their efforts. This is just a comment on the reality of whether the money is there, whether our students have been able to have those types of, the uniforms and things that they need, that just, the infusion of funds for that hasn't previously been there. And I think, I think I'm speaking for a number of the folks on the board here, that I am looking at this as an opportunity to, at least in a one-time fashion, correct that. And I think some of the questions that you've heard today have been an attempt to sift out some of those costs that typically would have been, or where those funds have been there, or perhaps haven't been there. And so I just wanted to clarify that, because I, for one, am very much behind implementing that equity piece and bringing, hopefully bringing our students up to a place where they should have been all along. And so I am seeing this as an opportunity, and hopefully a benefit to the school to do that. So I just wanted to...
I mean, while we've talked about what will happen in three to five years, there will absolutely be enthusiasm among students that will be generated by this board's action to support the budget that's been brought forward.
Absolutely. And I just want to say, I know, I think there was a question about, you know, whether there was savings or that sort of thing. I'm seeing this as a benefit for your school, and that is something that I feel very good about as a board member. So I just wanted to clarify that. There was also some questions about fundraising, and Dr. Braybrand, I don't know whether the foundation would be able to help with this or no. Okay, that's just out there, so never mind. I'll rewind that. There were some comments about, you know, things that you were thinking about would be needed for the $25,000 for discretionary costs. And some of that, I would say, I'm not thinking that all of the board members are thinking that every little single thing has to be replaced. I think you mentioned replace letters for students. Are you talking about...
The varsity letter? So the varsity letter used to be an S, and now it's a J?
I understand. But are you talking about current students? Are you talking...
Sorry, yeah, we wouldn't, I didn't mean to replace old ones. It's just moving forward, every athlete would need to get one, who participated in the future.
I understand.
So we're not going back and replacing old ones. Sorry about that.
Well, part of the reason I wanted to mention that is I think previously, we had had in our lists about, you know, changing things in the trophy case, or, you know, how...
Yeah, I know what happens with the athletic letter is, once a student receives one, their second one, they're typically getting a pin.
I got it.
So there isn't the same cost every single time for repeat athletes.
That's okay. But my point is, there may be some things that historically have happened, that even a music stand, I'm not so sure that it is a problem to have Stewart's name on the music stand. stand. I mean, perhaps that's up to you guys, but I don't, I'm saying, in my mind, I'm not thinking that every little thing, every previous trophy that's been, you know, has to be changed. I, I would see that as unnecessary. So I just leave that for your consideration. Okay, so in, in the information we received just today, I, I did want, just a clarification, and I marked it because there were, there were some, and I had the page earmarked and now it's not showing up. Here it is. For wrestling, for example, it says the cost for mascot change versus non-mascot change is exactly the same. Is, I mean, if you could just, I was just curious as to why that would be the same.
If, if you look at the photos, everything is logoed.
Okay.
Everything with wrestling has a logo, so essentially what happens is, and, and from the singlet to their warmups, all have massive Jeb Stewart with the, the logo piece on it. The singlet is, actually, I had to call Mr. Garvey because I questioned him on this. And I called him and said, I don't see it on the singlet. Well, you don't really see it on the picture. It's on the S of the, is on the thigh of the singlet.
Okay.
So it's very, very hard to see. So, you know, I, I provide that to you as I went through the exact same struggle and said, Brian, you're giving me bad information. This is driving me nuts. They're going to kill me. And, and in reality, he, he zoomed it in and said, no, it's on the S of, of the, of the, and I, I'm sorry, I may be taking it for granted.
That's okay.
A singlet is a wrestling uniform, you know. We're wrestlers, so we get singlets. Some people don't understand what a singlet is.
I have a wrestler in my family.
There we go. So, you know, between both the uniform and the singlet itself, they're well logoed.
Okay. All right. So I, you know, I really wanted to emphasize the equity piece. The other thing I don't see in the list is I know there's a huge, or at least I've seen pictures of a huge painting of Stewart himself. I guess, is it in the locker room with the arms?
It was an IB art mural that was created, that's currently in our weight room. So it was created by a student, an IB art student. So I think it was just in the facilities cost, the wall would just need to be painted back white.
So you, that was included in there?
It, it, yeah. Yep, the repainting of the wall. So just to paint it back white, not to have it painted again new.
That's fine. I just wanted to mention it because people.
And maybe the head could become something else. And the body could stay the same. The head could become.
I'm, I'm okay with nobody, but you know, that's your decision. Okay. But I, I mean, I think the biggest thing is that, you know, I really do see the, the equity pieces being included in here, even though it's seen as part of the name change. There does appear to be a significant part of what we're doing, or what we're looking at today, as going more toward equity as opposed to specifically name change, so.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin, then Ms. Schultz, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Evans, and then I'll speak last.
So before I comment on this, my colleagues will indulge me for a minute. I said, when we voted on this a little over a month ago, how much I appreciated that this was a difficult decision, that some of us had felt that Colonel G. Mendez, or L. Louis G. Mendez, might be a better way for the community to afford. But this notion on what I supported, what I didn't support, the bottom line was, we were trying to find a way to work with the community and bring it together. And while I did not feel that justice was going to do that as well as Colonel G. Mendez, the, our Louis G. Mendez, I do believe, and I've had extensive conversations with Sandy, that it is important that we as a board lead on the implementation, that we do everything we can to help the community make this as seamless as possible, that we help Principal Gross and all of her staff with this. And if anyone wants to go back and look at the tapes, and again, it's not to my colleagues, you hear me talk enough, but it's to the public, go back and listen to everything I ever said. This was never going to be about money. If we believed as a system that it was important to change this name, then we owned that decision. Not the community, not, you know, the boosters, not our principal. We believed it was the right thing to do. Now we need to pay for it. I really appreciate, Ms. Evans, you have worked tirelessly with staff to figure out the most cost-effective way to approach this. Mr. Curran, I appreciate that you've had to look at these numbers more than spend time with your beautiful, lovely dog, and probably family and everything else. So what I want from today's discussion is, first of all, that we lead with kindness, that we as the board model for the public and the community, that we recognize the need to help this community heal. And we do it by doing a really great job with the implementation. So that is my most macro level comment because for anyone who knows me, this has been a painful couple of weeks with people questioning my integrity and my commitment to ensuring not just equity issues, but again, healing for this community. So that has been my commitment all along and it will continue to be as both a social worker and a school board member. To the points that have been made so far. Number one, when we talk about this equity piece that everybody said, I know this probably as well as anybody on this board. I have watched the turf field issue at a countywide level. I've worked on that turf task force. I saw the numbers. I saw how our poor schools were the last to get these into turf fields, and I championed to get a funding mechanism in place so we could stop having inequity. So to this whole conversation today about, again, looking at these numbers, it's staggering. And I know these numbers again because I led the governance committee. And when the naming rights issue came up, I really appreciate that the Stewart DSA came and several of our other DSAs, West Springfield came. The inequity between what booster clubs raise in this county among our 25 high schools that field varsity sports is, it's, it's very alarming. I, I don't, I, I won't want to say it's shameful because, you know, that means we've, we've intentionally done something, but it is, it, it cannot continue. So looking at this again, I want to echo that not only do I support the $10,000 that should be going back to Principal Gross and her needs, but frankly, I, Dr. Braybrand, I will tell you, this is, this exercise is a great opportunity to go look at all of our booster clubs, the annual money they bring in, and what is the pressure that your principals will tell you and their, your DSAs will tell you on who's able to get top-of-the-line Ferrari in equipment and, and, and things that augment them as athletes? And then what do we got with, with other schools where they can only bring in 15,000 a year? We have, we have booster clubs that are bringing closer to $100,000 a year. So imagine how that feels like for Jeb Stewart, when they got to figure out how to ma- maintain their fields, which we put a pressure on the school side. This, this is definitely opening up Pandora's box to what we're talking about here. And, and I have been a champion on this issue for six years and will continue to be. And I, I will just say, I still remember as a PTA board member at my Little Run Elementary School where we were lucky to pull in $30,000 a year, and the Washington Post ran a story that Spring Hill Elementary that year raised $300,000. So you talk about what you can afford to do, depending on not just Ms. Evans, your boosters, but as you know, the PTAs. So, I mean, the, the tale of two cities is very real. I, my husband raised and worked on the issue, the funds for Woodson's turf field. I am grateful for every single booster and PTA member who is in our communities, making a difference in our schools. But we can't keep ignoring that while we are blessed to have dedicated volunteers, it still creates an inequity. In terms of the uniforms, I, I kind of want to stay very macro level. I'm going to go with Mr. Curran, working with the magistrate board member, Ms. Evans, and you guys, you know, figure out how to do this best. One thought would be picking up on what Ms. Keys-Gamarra said, was if the shorts have an S logo on them, you know, do we, do we want to make that a priority for replacement? Or is that something that, yes, we want to replace, but the S logo on the shorts is not the same as the jersey where you absolutely need to have that name on there? That's just something to consider because you mentioned the music stands and, and so I'm thinking about the S logo as opposed to, you know, where it's saying Jeb Stewart, where it's saying Stewart, where it's saying Raiders. The, the other thing is that when we look at the implementation plan, Dr. Braybrand, again, I'm going to just give you one of the 12 voices on your board, I think that is part of your implementation plan. And that was absolutely my expectation because, circling back to what I said in the beginning, this board, and therefore you and this administration own this change. And we absolutely need to flesh out what the fundraising component is to offset the cost because this board passed a, a motion that said, we're going to change this name, but that with public expectation, we didn't want to necessarily be drawing away existing operating funds, that we would be doing fundrais, providing the fundraising opportunity to protect the funds we're already trying to do to, to run the school system. Well, then we own that to have a, a fundraising framework. And, and it's not for the community to figure out on its own. We promised the community and we promised our taxpayers that this school system would do its best to not use the funding that, that we already have. So we, we need to fix that. And then I guess I would just say that Principal Gross, please know that you're hearing a lot of voices around the table, but I absolutely want to ensure that with the scarce resources that you and your DSA and your community already have to contend with, I do not want to find out that you've given away your gate receipts and taken away the money you need to, to simply operate the school and meet the needs of your student athletes or your, your band members. No. I know my colleague, Ms. Evans, and she knows many of us. You just let us know what we need to do to support you on this, but I don't want you sacrificing any more than, quite frankly, your school already does with the limited funding you've got. So that, that's kind of my primary comments right now.
Thank you. I have Ms. Schultz, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Evans, Ms. Fatakana.
Okay, a couple of different areas. First of all, is there a precedence for a mascot change anywhere in the county?
Fairfax High School. But I don't know if anybody was around when that was done.
Okay. I mean, I'm trying to figure out why the current student population are the only ones being solicited for the mascot change.
We're also including the eighth graders at Glasgow Middle School and following similar procedure that's been established with the naming of schools. So Westfield, South County, there is no regulation governing this, so we followed precedents.
So when, when we've opened a new high school, the high school opened without a mascot and the, and the kids picked their own mascot?
Yep, Mr. Rumberger let us know that the students did weigh in.
And colors.
And colors, although we are not changing our colors.
Why not?
Because it's additional cost.
Okay. So that was, that was one of my questions is if you change the, if you change the mascot but don't change the colors. Now, did the students vote not to change the colors?
They did not, but there is tile, ceramic tile in the building that was put in during renovation, which would be significant cost. There's the painting of outer buildings around the field that would also increase the cost. So it was a move to reduce the financial burden.
The neutral components of the uniforms as well.
Yeah, the, well, that's, I'm so glad you brought that up, Dr. Locker, because that's the note I wrote down, is when you were talking about the certain uniform components not having a logo on them, we didn't need to change those. I'm like, well, what if the colors change? But you're not changing the colors. And, and I guess those component, those.
Can I just interject real quick?
No.
The only time I've had a new mascot at a high school.
No, no, I'm sorry. I have the floor.
Followed that process.
No.
I'm the only one.
Okay, okay. So, so if, if there are uniform components, so I'm going to use maybe baseball pants. If you have baseball pants that are white, whatever the new mascot is, you'll, you'll work in the same component.
Correct. We are not doing anything to change colors.
Okay.
Or uniform colors.
Okay. So what is the current status of the booster club? Is it still like intact?
So it's intact currently. They do need to explore how to move forward as a legal entity with a new name, but there is a board in place who's working to fulfill the needs that we currently have this school year. Is that what you mean?
And is there an anticipated, is there any anticipated difficulty with that? Like, has there been any messaging from the booster club?
About their legal status?
About what will happen to them going forward?
So I think they have a couple of options. They can either hire an attorney and completely disband the current legal entity that they have, or they can do, and I, I'm not an expert on this, they told me they could do a DBA, which would be less costly, and they would remain the Raider Athletic Boosters doing business as whatever the new.
And have they made any indication about what they're going to do? Do you have any idea?
No, I mean, this just began, so both our PTSA and our Athletic Boosters, along with any other 501(c)(3), need to determine how they're going to move forward legally.
Okay. All right, I want to go to the, the question of, because there was a question about what has averaged in the past in terms of what they've donated. And I just want to dispel a myth that what has been averaged in the past or been paid in the past is irrelevant. I, I very clearly understood what you were trying to say, which is, there's a complete reset button. And previously, so if you own in your family, for example, four cars, if you, if your habit was, I'm going to replace two cars on the front of one vehicle, you know, in one quarter, and then the next quarter, I'm going to replace two back, pack tires on that vehicle, and then you rotate through every quarter, all of your vehicles, you have, you have spread out the cost of ownership of your vehicles over time based on, you know, your family's income. If, if you move to, you know, the Rockies and you need an entirely different set of tires on all of your cars, you need to buy all of those tires right then. And now you are on a wear cycle where you're going to have to replace all of your tires at the same time. We have, as a board, created that situation where everything has to be replaced at the same time, and that reset button is set from this point going forward. Any notion, any, any notion that, well, they can just keep their music stands, or they can just keep the S on those shorts, is, I, I actually think it's a pretty repugnant thing because we've already said as a board that it was a moral decision to change the name. And if you say that it's a moral decision to change the name and we change the name, but you, whatever team, you know, you don't get to change yours because we can't afford it. You can keep playing with, you know, Stewart on your music stand. Well, what you've said is it's not actually repugnant. So it's one or the other. If it's repugnant and it's amoral, immoral to have it, then you got to change it all. You can't, you can't pick and choose which team, which fine arts, which anything gets a replacement. And, and I asked at the work session before we voted, very specifically, the second we take this vote, we've encumbered the money, correct? And Ms. Michael, your answer was yes. And it's still yes. And I just looked at the website for the fundraiser. Dr. Braybrand is absolutely correct. We did not encumber his staff with fundraising. The story was, this money was going to come from private resources. We have $15,720 in that account right now. And if people are waiting, waiting for what? They were waiting for the name change. So I'm, I'm at a loss to explain how we voted and 15,000, I mean, pick a line item. One line item out of all of these can barely be paid for with the money raised to date. So where's the money? And I, I don't, I don't want to task staff. And in fact, I'm wondering, is anybody tracking the amount of staff time that you guys are devoting to this? I mean, Bill Curran, have you set up, you know, a cot in your office to be, you know, this is your second or third job at this point? So I'd like the, the public who committed to raising this money to show up, I guess I'm in the, you know, show me the money point so that the taxpayers aren't burdened with this. I don't think that we should be allocating the school board emergency fund for this. All of this, all of these numbers are numbers that we should have had well ahead of time going in, so we knew what we were walking into. And the community that said, we're going to raise this. And the community that said, "We're gonna raise this money, we wanna change the name of the school," should be raising it. And I'm gonna go back over to, and I'm getting a little bit concerned about this notion that, well, for this school, it's inequitable and we should buy their uniforms, and we should pay for their music stands, because it's not fair. So, what you're signaling to the other 24 high schools in the county is, well, if your children go to this school, you have to do all the fundraising, you have to buy the uniforms, you have to be an active booster, but the school board will pay for it at this one school. So, there are a lot of mixed messages going on around the table about what's equitable and what's not, and I don't wanna burden our staff anymore with the fundraising that supposedly was gonna be coming from the public in response to the name change. The name change has happened, so let the money start flowing, let's take the burden off of staff in having to dig down to individual line items and whether this warm-up comes with a bag or not. You know, go do what you gotta do, have the private donors show up with the money, and let's stop devoting massive amounts of staff time to something that's already been decided. It's gonna be a wholesale change. They've gotta stack up replacement, replacement, letters, replacement, trophies, replacement, volleyballs, music stands. I mean, it's all gotta be done. So, now's the time, let's have the private donation faucet, spigot, you know, open up. I do wanna ask, Mr. Curran, you were talking about other jurisdictions and what they do. Isn't there some kind of conference that athletic director, coaches, I don't know if principals go to it, from around the country where you can talk about these things? And maybe it's something we should be sending a couple of school board members to learn, to carry back information?
There is. There's the NI AAA or the VI AAA, which is a statewide association. There's the NI, National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. That conference is actually, right now, this, it started over the weekend and goes through now, so some of our DSAs are at that conference as we speak. It is the national center where everyone kinda comes together and has those conversations, and it's an annual conference.
So, I would, obviously, it's too late this year, I would, you know, potentially look at having one or two school board members, because this all seems to be sort of a novel understanding about where we are on this. And I think that we need to understand this better because you're talking roughly 50,000 high school students are affected by the policies of this board, and what you're seeing here in a simple couple of charts is repeated in every single high school and every single Booster community, the struggles of every single coach, athletic directors, et cetera. And I think that it's something that we could better understand. But I think we need to get into the business of the board faster, so I'm looking for the private donors to change the $15,720 rapidly and significantly to take the burden off of our staff and our school-based administrators.
Okay. Just a time check. Our next work session is supposed to start in three minutes. We have Mr. Wilson, Ms. Evans for a go-back, Ms. Fettacanda, Ms. Palczak for a go-back. So, Mr. Wilson? And Mr. Moon, you don't have a go-back, so I will take you after Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, just, I have a couple of questions, and maybe this is obvious from the information that we've been given, but just to clarify for me. So, the main hallway floor logo is no longer part of it, that's $45,000, is that?
No. If you take a look at, I mean, the $45,000 for the main hallway floor logo, that's the terrazzo floor.
Okay.
And part of the conversation is that, well, if we don't take that out, if we don't change it, if we leave it there as, remember, it's a historical artifact, then you don't have to take the $45,000 to break up the terrazzo, remove the logo, and then replace it with whatever...
So, is this, but I mean, I guess...
It's original floor, and so it was a suggestion to preserve school history that the savings...
That might not be a necessary change, is that thought? Okay. And then the turf field, that also has a significant reduction up there, about $95,000?
Yes, sir. Ms. Wilson, that was the difference between removing the turf and replacing it or painting over it?
In the end zones.
And the center logo.
And so, the savings, how are they achieved?
They're achieved by not, the first two were to replace the two end zone pieces in total because of what they say, and then the main center logo in the center of the artificial turf, that was the $104,000, and then the determination was, well, there are groups that can paint that, and we could actually paint those. It's not as long-term a solution, but it is something that is a viable alternative, and that's the reduction in cost.
So, I mean, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, because those account for, and then the marching band line item, account for the vast majority of the, I guess we can call them, savings between the net total required. Is it the expectation that we're going to do those things initially, or maybe Dr. Brabran can answer, that we're not gonna do those things?
I mean, we're gonna try painting it. If somehow the painting doesn't work to the degree that the community and the school board feels is up to Fairfax County standards, we'll come back and review an alternative strategy. But we went with the lowest-cost strategy first regarding the turf field, and the, what was the other one?
Terrazzo.
The terrazzo. We just decided, and again, that's a later action in the one-pager, about how to appropriately memorialize or recognize the historical Jeb Stewart, and we would tie that into that work. And we haven't done all that work yet, but we would figure out a way.
Okay. And another question I have is, getting at things that aren't on this list. So, for example, outside the gym, there's a mosaic, a small mosaic in the floor with also a Jeb Stewart logo.
That's the $45,000.
Well, that's the main floor logo?
Yes.
It's in the gym area, that one? Okay. Okay. That's, okay, so I thought that, when you said main hall, I thought that was that main hallway right as you go in the front of the school.
No. The only etching in the floor is in that main gym lobby area, and it's our understanding that it's original floor from the original building prior to renovation.
All right. And so then, in this list, I don't see crew as, can you just talk a little bit about why crew is not listed?
By regulation, crew was in the funded sport by FCPS. So, when we started the endeavor, it was determined that they weren't included with regards to replacement of items and...
Are there other activities or...
There are three specific club sports in Fairfax County.
I mean, at Jeb Stewart.
Crew is the only one, and it is significant, the amount of money they raise for their budget each year, but they were not included because Fairfax County, our athletic ticket gates, we give them $0.
Yeah. So, to me, this is an obvious inequity because you've got, these are parents, just like every other parent at Jeb Stewart, who are impacted by our decision. Just because their kid chooses to participate in crew, now they're gonna be, they're going to be disproportionately and badly affected by the change. And in fact, crew, because of the nature of the sport, has significant expenses associated with painting of the boats, painting of the blades of the oars, of course, they have the same jersey requirements. I think we need to get numbers for that, find out what we can do to help the crew families out, because I think there's a real risk with regards to crew, that you just put them out of business completely. And I think that is manifestly unfair to one portion of the athletic, portion of the student body. Okay. So, then there are, we have a sheet that says, "System changes." Are there items on this, and I don't wanna go through it fully, two sides, in terms of costs that we aren't seeing on this spreadsheet?
I'll look to some of the leadership team staff that helped put this together, particularly Mary Beth Loveglass.
The system changes are gonna be done by staff. That just means we have to reprioritize the work that they're doing and have them work on this before they do other requests for system enhancements and changes.
Right. So, what, I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is costs. So, that's, there's implied costs in what you just said. I wanna, I want to try to understand for the public, what are we talking about? Is that, we're talking about an additional staff person? We're talking about dedicating a staff person? What are we talking about?
It's reprioritizing, not new staff, existing staff to work on these, and it will delay things like reports and other things that we work on on a regular basis and regular maintenance. So, some of these applications, it's a quick and dirty fix-the-go into a table and change the name. Some of it's gonna be more extensive, that it require a lot of different report changes and whatnot. So, it also involves not just the school name change, but the pyramid name change.
So, would that include things such as the what's-in-a-name video? Is that...
It does not include what's-in-a-name video. It does include things like updating the website, but in terms of what's-in-a-name video, that would be getting on the regular list of video projects that are done on a regular basis, but it would not be something that would be in addition to. These are primarily backend systems, like the student information system and things like that, that have to be modified for the new change.
Like FS Direct for community use and so forth.
And I think I saw on the website that the students have winnowed the field of potential mascots down to five. Can you just tell the board where, what the proposals are for the...
Sure. So, we've included Glasgow eighth graders on this, so in terms of the timing, we've been rolling it out through Raider time, and then Glasgow's had to carve out time in their day to make room for this. But we are down to five, which include, let's see if I can remember in alphabetical order, so there's not one given a priority over another. The first one is, hold on. We had an original list of over 150, so...
If you're not sure of the five, by all means, take your time to...
We're sure. We're sure. Okay. So, the five are Falcons, Lions, Jayhawks, Raiders, Wolves.
I'm sorry. The fourth one you said was Raiders, to keep it as the Justice Raiders?
One of the nominations was Raiders, and it did land in the top five.
That seems an odd, new logo. I guess maybe that can make sense. So, in terms of the design of the logo and the, you know, that there's a technical aspect to that, is that included in our budget? You know, the graphic design?
We're anticipating that will be free of cost, either by one of the vendors, or that students, staff, community members may be able to assist in the design, and then our FCPS specialists would do any touch-ups to professionalize the final version.
So, for, to your point, Mr. Wilson, for the logo replacement, if there was a design that was identified, that $45,000 included some type of design replacement. So, if it were to be torn up, the existing logo and whatever's there, and then a logo to be put in...
You're talking about the terrazzo.
I'm talking about the terrazzo flooring. So, that's what we included in our price, not the design setup for that and what you were talking about before.
And with regards to the working cannon, is there any plans with internally to repurpose that to any other school in the county?
We have a cannon guy that's worked for many years, volunteered every single week. So, I guess based on whatever the new low mascot is, we don't know what will become of that.
Okay. I look forward to hearing what might happen to the cannon.
I was just gonna say...
So, I just wanna pick up finally on the comments about the fundraising, because the one overarching purpose that I think this board should encourage the superintendent and the staff as they move forward, is that the process be a process of bringing together the community of this high school. And I think one of the reasons why I proposed that we put the fundraising piece first is that I think the act of fundraising and finding the private funds would go a long ways towards addressing one of the significant concerns of both residents of the Jeb Stewart community and outside, that we are not gonna be charging to the community at large for the name change of one school, that we've decided that we no longer want that name. And I think, I still feel that we ought to put the fundraising first, make an effort to really, you know, GoFundMe this thing and find the momentum for the effort in renaming. I think that while I agree with Ms. Schultz that by voting to change the name, we in fact have kind of encumbered the school system, it still remains a comment that I receive. Just this past weekend, I didn't even know this person lived in Jeb Stewart. Turns out that both her and her husband went to Jeb Stewart. They were still, they were under the impression, frankly, that no FCPS funds would be used. And I said, "Well, I don't think that's quite true." They said, "Well, isn't there a fundraising?" I said, "Yeah, there's a fundraising page." But they were like, "Well, we can't spend county tax dollars for this project." They were under the impression that we had decided to fund it with private funds because of what was in the motions that we passed, which sent that message, that expectation that there'd be a substantial portion of the cost would come from private funds. So, I still think that we ought to put that first. Let's pursue the private funds. Let's make the effort to cause those people who were behind, initially behind the effort, you know, to become a participant in this, to get their skin in the game, as it were, and really show the county that we're gonna hold puff on this issue and not go right to, you know, saying, "Hey, this is just, you know, coming out of the general fund co-offers." Because as we know, when we voted on the budget, we chose to impose three separate fees on families in Fairfax County. And you might as well translate that, if we're just gonna pay it out of funds, let's just raise the fee. Everybody can kick in a little more money because we didn't, we couldn't hit our numbers last year, so we came up with a fee. I think we've got to attack this first on the fundraising side. And we gave ourselves the time to implement this in a very judicious way, playing on the word of justice, so that we have the time to do the fundraising. I don't think we need to now say, "Well, we gotta move forward now," because I think once we do that, we're gonna defuse any momentum on fundraising.
Ms. Fettacanda, and then Mr. Moon.
I'm sorry. So, this is a question for you. So, what's the possibility of having, like, sponsored uniforms for the, like, you mentioned there's going to be like a lower quality set of uniforms for JV and varsity until the new replacement cycles?
Uniforms, as they stand in high school, under control of Virginia High School League, as well as the National Federation of High Schools, are limited with what you can put on them. So, the idea of the actual recognition side, to be on the uniform is a very big challenge because we can't do it based on the National Federation rules as well as the High School League rules. Stewart, as it is, is already in the fundraising mode just in the, on an annual basis and has been for years with regards to stuff. It's a great idea. We've actually, okay, you know, what can you do with uniforms, but it's extremely limited. Even memorializing someone with a sticker on a helmet or initials on a jersey takes approval, takes certain levels of approval. So, it's a great idea, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Shortly that I missed a work session this morning, and probably first part of more than half of the discussion on this particular topic. Today was one of those days when my client's mail trumped at school board duties. So, Samir, that, do I understand that we are trying to seek a consensus on how to move on the timeline, both on the timeline and the budget?
Yeah. Let me bring you up to date.
Yeah, let me, let me bring you up to date. The only decision point, and it will come, the, the assumption is it will become as part of the mid-year budget review, that we will authorize the, the spending up to a dollar amount. And what has been proposed, I intend to get a sense of the board, is to, to raise the $267,000 to $10,000 more. That gives a little more buffer to it and acknowledges the difficulty of the, of the boosters in raising money as well. If it, if there is not a consensus, Ms. Corbett Sanders has said she intends to bring a budget amendment, but just...
What's that, $267,000?
Okay, if you look at, which document?
I'm so sorry.
One of the documents, one of the documents that we got, it shows the projected potential, it's on this one?
Okay.
It is the potential amount of money that things have to be ordered, which, which was explained to us. That's our decision point.
Even though we're not, we're not necessarily making a, you know, decision or seeking consensus on the Justice High School implementation plan timeline, maybe that may be tied to the budgetary decisions as well. Just overall, I support the timeline. I support the timeline because there were questions as to whether it was going to be from a beginning of next year's career versus year following. I generally support the idea of expediting that we have gone through, we've been going through, still going through, but this has been going through way too long, too long. I think it's much better to come to a closure on all of this rather than continuing with this rather difficult and painful process.
Well, just again, since you came in a little late, the assumption, unless I hear something different, is that we will go forward to begin to spend money, which would mean that the whole thing actually goes the 1890s.
Now, I'm going to get to the money part.
Sure.
I'm sure I missed, you know, a lot of great answers posed by my school board members, questions posed by my school board members, but I must to say that I, looking at the numbers, I was somewhat disappointed to put mildly about the level of fundraising, that $15,000 was not something I expected to see. Since I'm not the one who's doing the fundraising, I don't want to blame just the public out there not raising enough money, if there was any threshold. I do not have a threshold on my mind, but I was disappointed, see the, a rather small amount of money. Having said that, having said that, it has been always my position consistently, consistently as a person who supported Justice High School as a new name, as a person who, who supported the change of the name, that the board wouldn't be making those decisions unless board found a compelling need. If the board, if the need board found to be compelling enough to change the name, then it is incumbent upon the board to come up with the resources to implement. I know that's what Mrs. McLaughlin earlier stated, that was exactly the point I had been making all along consistently, that I am still in the same position. It is incumbent upon school board, school rather than, rather than putting so much pressure and burden upon the community. I mean, they are the taxpayers, they pay taxes to support us already, they do that, that we need to come up with the resources to make this happen. But I'm, I'm still going to go back to the level of the fundraising done in the community, and I was disappointed. I want to see whether I can find, structure the next budget motion, whether that's a part of mid-year or standalone, a, a to be, that to be structured in such a way that we give some incentive for the community to do more aggressive fundraising. By that I mean, instead of, instead of putting all $400,000, about $400,000 that I see into, into a authorization for the superintendent to be able to spend right away, we could have a certain amount, whether that is, whether there's $300,000, a reasonable number, that I do not know. I want, you know, staff to be able to, you know, put that into consideration to see what would be if we were to do it in phased, in phases, that we authorize certain amount as a part of mid-year budget review, and then encourage the community to do more fundraising, and then staff to figure out with us, a certain level of authorized funding, what they can do first and what can wait until after community-wide fundraising is accomplished, finished. That is basically where I am at this point.
Let me, let me share with you, there has been from the community, from those people who are, who are going to be doing the fundraising, they have, they have also asked for at least some help in getting them started. Can they have a name? There are, there seem to be other issues in their mind in order for them to truly be able to go out. So part of the next step is, is at least finding out what can be done to help them go forward with the strength of...
So again, my, my position is, school board in my mind, as one board member, has a moral duty to support, come up with the resources, sufficient resources to put, to, to carry out implementation plan. First. Second, structure the funding in such a way that we allow, we encourage community to little more aggressive fundraising.
Okay, I guess we'll, we'll have a discussion offline, because there's some things that they simply are going to have to order in January.
I understand.
That's what we've been doing.
I, I understand that.
Okay, all right. I have Ms. Palchak, Ms. Evans, and then I will speak last. Okay, we are going to do a hard, pardon? We, we've been doing goat backs. I believe, well, okay, well, anyway, we will have a hard stop at about 4:20, okay? Because, all right, okay.
Thank you. Ms. Palchak?
Thank you. Just a brief wrap-up, thank you. I guess number one, I would love to have a follow-up. So I support this timeline. I also agree with those who spoke before me most, that it is time to move forward. I know it has taken staff time. Unfortunately, this is not the only issue we address here that adds to our staff time, so we do appreciate everything you do for our kids and our community. You know, since this, these are all estimates and we're now looking at 2018 budget, 2019, I don't know if it needs to be a next step, but I would like for us to come back next year, look at what the real costs and the real fundraising, fundraising were, if there were additional costs we hadn't foreseen, or if we were able to find some true savings and bids in fundraising. So I guess a follow-up to, to come back next year and see what we're able to do and what needs to be done. I don't know if that's already scheduled.
Right, Ms. Palchak, appreciate that suggestion. In the high school implementation plan?
Thank you.
Timeline, under June, July of 2018, there is a update to the school board on progress on June 30th at that point.
And so can I just assume progress will include real costs, fundraising, and then future costs? Because my understanding when we first met and Mr. Curran, when we spoke about this was that this would be a boost. You were saying to us today that this is actually a cost to the school. None of us here wants this to be a cost to the school. So once we go through this, I would like to know if there's a cost to the school that we are, you know, covering that. Most likely, we're hoping for a boost, so that's unfortunate. And I'd like to see the reality in the end. So if we can make sure that happens. Also for the fundraising, so I'm wondering who is, who owns the lists and the emails and the contact information that's coming in? Because I would like the school, perhaps the boosters, who can have that to be able to continue fundraising from this new list on an annual basis? I don't know if we have a regulation around that or how we can ensure that, you know, this continues to be an area. The contact list for fundraisers are like gold, so.
$15,000, it's a receipt who's contributing, so can the school have a name? I believe the parent, that can be fine. I think you could talk with Ms. Evans, she will probably be able to help you with the parents who are working on that and the list that they are...
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that that list can continue to be accessed by the school in the future, so they can continue to fundraise from that, that's all. But no, I support this and moving forward, if we could come up with a system, Mr. Moon, that would be great, but right now, let's go on and if we come up with a good way to, to encourage fundraising, I'm, I'm on board.
Okay, I have Ms. Evans, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Okay, I'll try to be very brief, because I know we're trying to get to another important work session. Just to Mr. Moon's point, and I know Mr. Moon rarely misses even a minute of work session, so it's, when, before you came in today, I had asked that one of the next steps be a fundraising plan, because we do need to create a citizens committee that gets the help and direction of FCPS and the superintendent, so they can really go out there enthusiastically and energetically. And I do believe we now have better numbers, we have the background documentation that the community has been asking for. And so just as one example, one of the things they had wanted to do was say, okay, you know, sponsor, sponsor a kid, you know, sponsor a football player, sponsor a basketball player. And I think if we can help them find a way to do things like that, create a committee, we can move forward with, with more energy. So I think we're poised to do that, and I am asking that that be a next step. The only other point I'd make, and Ms. Keys-Gamara made this very, very well, and, you know, is supported by Ms. McLaughlin, I, I think one of the things that has come up with this, it's, you know, I was trying to make that point myself as well, not as well as, as my colleagues have, about so much of this has become an equity issue. And I think we need to show that, that we as a school board are going to support this school in a variety of ways through this change as a matter of equity. Mr. Curran, with the $47,000 in gate receipts, what would be either an average or the, the range of gate receipts for our, our high schools? Do you, I mean, if you don't have it off the top of your head?
I don't have that off the top of my head. It is something that's available to us from a previous year, that does deposit in FCPS accounts. We have pulled that data from time to time. It's one I will pull.
Okay. I, I would like to see that, because I think we, we've identified a very significant issue for, for some of our schools. I mean, it's a huge issue, and we need to address that separate from this name change. So with that, I, I had a couple of other things, but I'm, I'm going to be quiet now because I know other members wanted to say things. So thank you. And again, I, you know, Stuart is a great school. I try to make that comment every time we talk about this. And Ms. Gross, your leadership has been fantastic, and I appreciate the emphasis you have had and on the academics at that school and the, the environment at that school. So thank you for everything you do.
I have Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Keys-Gamara.
So I'm, I'm not sure I heard everyone speak maybe with clarity for Dr. Braybrand, so I do, I assume Ms. Strauss, she'll probably have us just raise our hand, but I do think it's very important that Mr. Moon spoke specifically about the implementation plan. And I do think that, to my early remarks about helping the community heal, the quicker we can get this transition going, that I think the, the better the healing. I remember when we first set out, you know, that this change would be in place by fall 2019, thinking we needed to get the funding first and then put this change. I'm, I'm very glad that, you know, there's been a recognition that, no, that's far too long for the community to, to move forward and for the kids to be able to, you know, we've made a decision as a board and as a school division, it is Justice High School. The sooner these kids can start, you know, calling it by a new name and, and not being sort of in this alternate world where there's two reference points. I feel like even in the, in our work session today, you know, we're, we keep saying Stuart, but then, you know, we're also, you know, introducing Justice and, and so if we're having trouble knowing which, which name to reference it in today's work session, imagine what's like for the community. I think that the statement being made that we have to prevent any costs being incurred by this school itself, the, the boosters, the community, and also the administration, you know, that was made before and that's essential, that that's clear leaving here today. And then I, I do want to, as a next step, make sure that we do, Dr. Braybrand, get sort of a sheet or a chart that does show us what our annual gate receipts are by our 25 high schools, I think. And frankly, we should be getting that same detail from our PTAs. I, I don't know why, if we're all, you know, working together in collaboration and partnership to support a public schools, I think it would be extremely illuminating for the 1.1 million residents here in Fairfax County to see those numbers and realize, you know, how different it is depending on where you are and where your school is. The one technical question I wanted to ask, and this might go to Mr. Curran, I had mentioned this to Ms. Evans, I remember from the Woodson renovation, Trazo floors are very expensive, but they're known for being 100 years durable. But I'm not sure I'm comfortable about the concept that the logo would just, because it's $45,000, well, we would designate that being the historic piece? I mean, that's the entrance into the school. So one thought...
Into the gym.
Oh, into the gym. Into the gym. Well, it's, yeah, well, and, and where do you get all your visitors and guests and everybody else's? But where, where that logo is, have, if, if it's so expensive with that $45,000, have they thought about maybe, you know, those rubberized mats that we do create for our schools that have the, the school's logo or even just the school's letter? Having one of those made, and so rather than you're ripping up expensive Trazo, you're putting a, a customized floor mat over it? So I think that's, so...
Sorry, it's in the middle of our main gym lobby. We do have walk-off mats and things that are logoed that will need to be replaced there, but I think to have a mat sitting in the middle of the lobby would, would...
So when people walk in our front doors of our schools, aren't some of those mats there?
This is, this is in, in the very center. So if you can imagine a gym lobby, it's not right when you walk in where you would wipe your feet off.
Okay.
It's in the middle where you wouldn't see it coming. Like if the gym lobby is packed, you would not see that people are standing on a mat because it's, it's not when you first walk in. You have to actually enter the gym lobby, and our gym lobby is very narrow to begin with, and just becomes very crowded. I would just be concerned about it being a safety issue.
Right. So I, I would just say that I don't know Dr. Braybrand, Ms. Evans, how you, you guys want to wrestle this one, but I, maybe it is just working with the community, but I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with this notion of it's, it's a high dollar number, and so maybe that one gets designated historic. I mean, I, I, I can't make that decision, it's not my school, community, but I'm just saying that, that's different from music stands.
What I'd like to share, if I may, Chairman Strauss, sometimes during, you learn about implementation during implementation. If during the execution of the implementation we shared with you today, issues, concerns come up, either from us or from the community, we can always bring that back to reference to you. This is our plan as we stand right now in December 2017. If we get new information or get new feedback in a way that makes us feel we need to change it, we would certainly want to communicate that to you and bring it back to you.
Okay, I have, done, okay. Ms. Keys-Gamara, and then I'm going to take a sense of the board on a couple of issues. Oh, Mr. Wilson, yes, then you get to be the last one.
Okay. I'll just echo Ms. McLaughlin's concerns. I, you know, obviously it's not, this board isn't taking up the decision of whether to put down a rug or not, but I would just simply say my concern would be what, what message does it send? You know, does it, is it in historical context or does it look more like, you know, we have two names? So obviously that's something that, you know, you need to consider. But I did want to just speak to one last thing, and I think a couple of my colleagues mentioned the issue of fundraising and getting that done first, and I, I'm, I'm just not in agreement with that being a hurdle to moving forward. So I, I think that we do need to move forward as quickly as we can.
Mr. Wilson, you're the last.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess as I was thinking about the fundraising to date and the apparent restriction on spending county funds on crew, I, I think the board should consider designating those privately raised funds for the benefit of crews so that they aren't disproportionately... aren't disproportionately and adversely impacted by this name change, because they will need new boat jackets, they will need to re-letter their skulls and their shells, they will need to repaint their, the oar blades, as well as their uniforms for racing, so, and if anybody needs any other reason, other than just to help those families and those students, the Jeb Stuart Crew has an incredible history, they were actually national championships, champions, and were, traveled to England to race in the London Race against the, on the Thames, and so, I think we, you know, they're an historic, you know, part of Fairfax County Public Schools, that program itself, and I think that we would be doing a grave disservice to that portion of Jeb Stuart High School parents and families, if we don't figure out a way to hold them harmless, if we're gonna hold everyone else harmless within the school system in terms of athletics, to single out one sport seems supremely unfair. I would also say one other thing, and I don't, I don't think that fundraising is going to be the balm that heals this community, but I will say that this community has had some challenges, as we see in our demographic analysis of families not placing their kids at the high school, and this family that I talked to, they, they've had, they both had graduated, and they'd had their older children go through the school, they have one remaining daughter who's an eighth grader, and they are really on the fence as to whether they want to put their child into ninth grade at Jeb Stuart High School, because their impression of what the school board has done has been that the school board has not recognized the voice of the community and those parents and families who are deeply invested in the school.
Okay, I'm gonna take a sense of the board on two issues, one, because it has been, we've had several members talk in support of the timeline that's there, and we do need to make sure that, in fact, this is the timeline that we are agreeing with, so just sense of the board, how many people agree with the overall timeline, in other words, moving forward, going ahead to begin to order the things that have been laid out, with the official name change in celebration being in the beginning of the 2018 school year, how many people support the timeline? Okay, thank you. Then, the other piece of the discussion is, first, from staff, there has been a recommended allocation being set aside, is part of the mid-year budget coming out of the school board reserve of $267,741, that would be up to that amount, in order to begin to order and purchase the required things, there's been a suggestion to put another $10,000 in that, to make sure that we are covering and that we are not overly burdening the parent body, who we know...
Ms. Strauss, is the intention that private funds, then, will restock the...
Yes, 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 I believe that that is the intention.
And as of when?
Pay us back.
What happens if there isn't even that much raised?
Well, I think, can we take this sense of the board first?
Well, I can't take it if I don't, I can't vote if I don't know.
That's fine, but we haven't gone through the huge piece about, the, I'm believing, Ms. Evans, that the intent is that if funds are raised, because already, if you take a look on this sheet, there is the assumption of the $15,000 already offsetting the cost, if you take a look at the large, on this sheet, Ms. Schultz?
I understand that, but I'm just asking, what are we not going to pay for, because if we don't raise that much money, you're asking us to allocate out of the school board reserve, we have to make full hold the school board reserve in the future, so you're gonna take from something else to make the school board reserve whole, these are questions I asked before we voted, where is the money coming from, and nobody had an answer?
Yes.
And I feel like we're saying right now, we still don't have to have an answer, we can just go ahead and spend the money.
Well, this is, I need, excuse me, no, hold on, just a second, I need a sense of the board, because there is a need to advance purchase some of the stuff, there has been a suggestion, in my sense and listening to my colleagues, in order for us to be able to come to a decision on Thursday night, which is important to meet the timeline, I just would like, if there is not a sense of the board, people can still come with amendments, that's fine, is there a sense of the board to increase the amount to, to...
Two seventy-seven.
To two seventy-seven, seven forty-one, as an amount of money that could be spent up to that amount in this, and to, to decrease, help to decrease the obligation, the assumption is, we're gonna fundraise and pay it back as best as we can, I just need that sense of the board.
Can I provide one clarification, Ms. Strauss, I'm back here?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Because the $10,000 was used to offset FY19 requirements, we don't need to up the $267,000 for FY18.
So, we can leave it, leave it the way it currently is, but it means that going forward if the board wishes to increase... Okay, so the $10,000 was, okay, so the, so, hold on a minute, so, the $267,741 is what is needed to order and purchase this list of material, and in, within this, there is also a discretionary amount of $25,000 to be able to cover those things, stationary letters, what have you, all right, I would like a sense of the board, and from Ms. Quinn, if we want to help offset any contribution from the Booster Club fundraising, that is a decision that then would be made as part of the 2019 budget, or, okay, all right, a sense of the board, all right, so can people... Very quick.
Very quick, what I'd like to do is immediately take off the table, FY twenty, fiscal year 2019, the obligation for the gate receipts of $10,000 to be, I'd like to take that obligation off the table.
I think that would be a staff, we're asking as a next step to take that off, we don't have to make a fiscal decision on that until later.
But we can certainly make a statement from this board that we do not believe that it is the obligation.
All right, so we are taking that line off, okay, I first, I need a sense of the board, to authorize in the mid-year budget, which will come on Thursday night, the $267,741, I'd like to know, will people be able to support that? Yes, okay, and we will take it under advisement to the superintendent to take off the $10,000 from the boosters, we obviously will have to, after the fundraising and we see everything else.
And Ms. Strauss, I also had the next step.
Yes, we will do the next steps, I guess I will take a sense of the board, is there a sense of the board to basically not obligate the boosters to have to put in $10,000, or shall we wait?
It's not the boosters, though.
Right.
It's the gate receipts, okay, all right, so is there a sense of the board to take off the obligation of the case?
You asking us to make a different set of rules for one high school than 24?
You don't have to vote for this, I'm just asking for a sense of the board.
No, no, we're talking about, we're talking about on, in a work session, voting for a different set of rules for gate receipts for one high school versus 24.
People don't, hold on, hold on, this is not, you don't have to vote for this, I'm just trying to figure out where we are, is there a sense of the board to take off the obligation of the gate receipts on this particular proposed sheet, is there a sense to do that? All right, so at the moment, we will take it off, we'll see where we are, okay, can we see the next steps, please? Okay, staff to create fundraising plan for board review, I guess my question is, this is for staff to work with the parents?
My hope is that they can, yes, that they can work with the parents, create a committee, give them letterhead, and actually work on a robust fundraising plan.
So, it's staff working with, just a minute.
Sorry, what does it mean, a committee?
It is to work with the parents who are working on this, because I know there has been a request, that they need a little more help in getting themselves going as to...
But do they have a status, is it a 503?
Well, this is, these are some of the kinds of things they need to be worked out by staff.
All I ask is, instead of create, I'd like to say, staff will coordinate a fundraising plan...
That's great, yes.
With external stakeholders.
Yeah, yeah, staff will coordinate...
Yeah, with community stakeholders, will coordinate, and that leaves us room to find out, let me find out some legal things, I don't, I don't have an answer for all of that, if I felt there was additional resources we needed to do that, I would come back and ask.
All right, so it's, staff will coordinate with, take out the fundraising plan, staff will coordinate with the community stakeholders in the development of a fundraising plan, so it's, because it's with the community.
Can we assume this will include Ms. Murphy with her experience?
Well, no, 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 the foundation is not gonna be part of this.
So, but this wouldn't preclude you from creating the kind of committee that the community members have said that they would like to have?
I think they need to, they need time to research this one a bit.
I need time to reflect on this, honestly, as I told you before, I did not see this board tasking me with a fundraising plan, when you asked me to do an implementation plan, I don't mind coordinating with community stakeholders around the development of it, who's doing what is what I need a little more time to reflect on.
That's right, no, I think we need to give them...
But I also wanted to be clear that this is to create a robust fundraising plan, that we will actually, that they will work with them. The FCPS will help with that, that we're not just gonna leave individual community members out on their own, that we're actually, so, I...
I'd like to clarify why, my understanding is, although she works for the, she has the foundation, Ms. Murphy is our staff, she is FCPS, do we not, do we not supplement that?
No.
She's the space.
She belongs to the foundation, let's let, let's let Dr. Braybrand and the legal staff and the financial people...
There are a lot of questions you're asking, I'm not prepared to answer today with the fidelity and the preciseness that I've, I know that this board would want.
But this makes it clear that staff will create a fundraising plan with the help of community members, who want to fundraise.
Sure.
I apologize, Ms. Strauss, but I think it's important, when I heard Dr. Braybrand saying, he wants clarity on where this board views this issue, and so, I thought there was a number of us in today's work session that said, this board voted that we were going to change the name of this high school, and that this board was committed to trying to reduce the reliance upon, you know, current operating funds by capitalizing on private donations, but the board owned all of that, and so, I'm a little worried in the conversation, Dr. Braybrand, from my perspective, we made that promise to the entire community, we need to deliver on that entire community, that we have community stakeholder volunteers who want to help us with that, to get these private funds, but in the end, this board, and therefore, the school system owns this in getting the private donations, not the community owns the process, so, I welcome the community doing it, I don't want the pressure or the onus on the community, this is, we own this, it's not their fault, that, you know, we were trying to figure out how to fund it, but we made that promise, they didn't ask us to make that promise, we did, and so...
Ms. McLaughlin, I think, I think we need to let them sit down and meet and figure out what is, what is need here. Could I suggest a slight change?
Sure.
Okay, what I'm gonna suggest is, staff will develop a fundraising plan in coordination with community members, is that all right? Does that work?
Is that okay with you?
I think, let's take that, and I can come back and figure out whether, the issue is the workload on staff to execute the fundraising plan, I need you all to understand, we've spent substantial time, and will spend even more, in implementing the implementation plan, a fundraising plan is not a one-minute thing to create or to execute, I mean, people in the field are expert fundraisers, I do not have expertise in fundraising as part of being a superintendent, so, I want, I need to spend the time, I don't mind coordinating with the community and finding out what's involved and reporting back to you, and if you decide you want that as part of the implementation plan, it may be for us to do it, I might say, outsource it to someone, I don't know enough to give you the answer at the preciseness at which it would be all on staff.
To your point, it might be cheaper for us just to pay for it and be done with it, and not have to pay more staff to do the fundraising piece, just pay for it and be done.
All right, we need to go on.
So, maybe, maybe, how about this, to be more precise, right, staff will research the ability to implement a fundraising plan in coordination with community stakeholders.
That would be better, you need, you need to...
Hang on a second, I don't think that researching the ability doesn't get us where we need to be, we need to have a fundraising plan, somebody needs to have a fundraising plan, somebody needs one. I've been working with a couple of other organizations that are in the midst of trying to do this, they need to sit down and begin to sort this out, because there's some legal issues, there's some startup issues, and, and they need to get, because, give them a chance to get started, and then we'll... That's fine, but my proposal is for staff to develop a fundraising plan, and I would hope that the board would support me in that, would develop a fundraising plan with, in coordination with community members, because that's what we need.
All right, well, let's, we'll research the ability to implement, is that, is that language okay?
But again, I'm saying no, I'm saying, yeah. All right, I'm saying that staff needs to actually develop a fundraising plan in cooperation with the, with the community.
Okay, I guess, Dr. Braybrand, if you find, you, you guys need to sit down and figure out what this entails, and your acknowledgement is the actual heavy lifting of going out and, and raising the money, your concern is whether...
What I'd say is, if you're asking me to create it, I will have to come back and tell you my ability to create it or not create it, using existing staff and resources, and I can't tell you that it's a free price tag, that's just all I'm gonna say, I have no skill set, nor do I have any one of my staff with a skill set in professional fundraising to raise this kind of money, I just need to say that, it's not that I'm not, it's not that I'm not wanting to, if the board so directs, I will, I will come back, but what I'm saying is, I'm not sure, with my existing knowledge in Fairfax and knowledge of staff, that we have the skill set around that, that would be just my fair reaction to it.
I think you guys have to sit down and see with the parents, what needs to be done, what can be done, what's gonna create other things, okay, from the mid-year budget review, we've already done a sense of that piece, the third bullet, any private funds raised will be used to replenish the flexibility reserve to the original amount, I'm assuming that there is consensus that as money is raised, it will help to replenish what has come centrally, yes? Mrs. Schultz, identify what happens if private funds raised are insufficient to replenish school board flexibility reserves, I guess, Ms. Schultz, did we answer the question, or is that, okay, and you want an answer, we'd have to pay for it, where you, who do you want that answer from?
No, 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 not we have to pay for it, we have a finite number of resources, if that money is not raised privately, in order to replenish our flexibility reserve, it has to come from someplace else, we will have to take from someplace else to give to this.
Yes, that's correct.
I would like, I would like an answer on how we're going to replenish our reserve, and where that money is gonna come from, as a next step, we're gonna have to, I mean, look, it's $15,720, Mr. Moon himself said, how disappointed he was, that that was the figure at this point, and so, what happens if it stays at $15,720, and we're now committing more than a quarter of a million taxpayer dollars to this, we've got, we've got to have an answer of where it's gonna come from.
And, Ms. Schultz, to be specific and detailed, I'm not sure we can answer that one yet, but we'll have to see, we need to go on, because we have another work session that is timely and important, provide information about total gate receipts from all high schools combined, I need to, I know that there's been interest in that, and this is, may or may not be germane to what we're doing right here, and, Dr. Braybrand, and Mr. Currie, is this, is this going to create larger problems, fewer problems, because there is a huge, it depends on the size of the school, the team, the da-da-da?
No, it's supposed to be information on individual gate receipts from each of the high schools.
And I guess my question is, is what are we going to do with that? Is that really an important thing to look at as part of this investigation?
I gotta tell you, if our school administration doesn't know what the gate receipts are at each of our 25 high schools every single year, I gotta wonder how we're doing accountability on this.
And I believe it's a part of the yearly audit, is that right? And I think it's published each year as part of the activities audit.
So, why can't we just ask the audit... So why can't we just ask the audit, I mean, we have an auditor general to serve the board. And as the board says this is important information, why aren't we just then directing the auditor general's office?
The request is made, and the report's being run. It's that simple.
Okay, it is. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we go over.
I think it is fair to say, let's just be honest with everybody around the table, right? Honest with everybody. This is about whether you're going to do needs-based staffing for sports and extracurricular activities the way, I'm just saying, that's... So we need to be honest as we have these equity discussions. They are deep. We have had inequities around PTAs since the first PTA formed, not just in Fairfax, in Virginia, around the country, around sports, too. So it's a big, big issue. You are going to see big discrepancies. I felt it when I was a principal and an AP. All principals know it. So the board just needs to know, we'll give you the information. Do I have an answer to that? I don't have an answer to that today. Those are huge policy questions and, for the most part, have taken place outside the purview of the school board for resolving. So that's just important to say as we do this next step around that information.
Okay, all right. It has been asked, and evidently you can run it, and it is what we will do with it. Okay. Consider designating privately raised funds for use of crew team to offset cost of uniforms and equipment. I'm going to ask if there is a consensus to allocate any of the funds for crew, which is a club sport.
Before you do, in addition to that, I would like, if you would, Principal Gross, to reach out to the person in the crew, you know, organization, to find out whether they've run any numbers on what the name change will cost them so that we have a sense of what it is.
And we do not allocate funds for any of the crew clubs in the county.
Yeah, I understand. So that, so the, I think that the question would be for this, if there's private funds raised through donors, could those funds be designated for the crew in this case?
Well, and I would suggest that if we're going to go in this direction, that we take out privately raised because we may find in the fundraising that people will specify themselves what they want it to go for, that they'll want it to go to baseball, they'll want it to go to football, as opposed to us saying ahead of time, we're going to give crew precedence.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a sense of the board because this is a new piece that was raised. I'm going to ask a sense of the board. We've got to go on. How many people...
Wait, I have a process question because I think there's a legal problem here. This is a club. So if this school system starts giving any money to a single club, all the other clubs are going to come forward and say, how come crew got the money? I'm really sensitive to crew. It's a fabulous sport, but they've chosen to stay private so they can have really expensive coaches and they can get the money they want. So until they want to become an actual school activity, I don't know that we can give them money.
That's why I would like to do...
I appreciate that, Ms. McLaughlin, but I don't think you know what crew coaches are paid or what expenses are paid or what the family income of the crew families are. So I think that there's some assumptions there.
Okay, my dear colleagues, I would like to do a sense of the board on this because this was something new that was put on the table. A sense of the board, how many people would like to consider using some of the raised money to also offset the cost of crew? Okay, I see that as not being something that somebody can, that the board can support now. So if you'd like to take that one off, and then, okay, so we'll erase that one. And the last is identify staff time devoted to name change regarding workload. And I guess, Dr. Braybrand, is that something that is reasonably done or does that take a lot of staff time to simply figure that out? Well, just hold on a minute.
How much staff time to, how much staff time? I think we can come up with a rough, a rough number that won't be too hard.
I am concerned about workload on timekeeping.
If it's too high a workload, I'll come back and say so.
Okay, if you will please come back and say if this is not a reasonable thing to ask.
Well, I'm just going to say, I'm not going to vote for this because we have staff that, you know, they do their work, and I don't see why we have to burden staff to do the...
All right, then we will vote on this one as a sense of the board. Identify staff time devoted to name change regarding workload. How many people would like to see that data? All right, then for this moment, we will take this one off. Okay. Yes, I guess on the next steps, what we need to put on is we had said that we would take off the $10,000 assumption from gate receipts from the 2019 request.
Remove the assumption of 2019 gate receipts going to...
Remove assumption of 2019 gate receipts.
Being dedicated to the renaming.
We already did vote.
And you can put in for...
$10,000. Okay.
That's hard. You can vote it on.
Right. Okay, thank you all very much. This has been very enlightening, and we really appreciate the hard work that everybody has put into this. A lot of detail. Thank you. We will take the two- to three-minute break and then begin with the next. Thank you very much.